Our work session to order for the town of Batesburg Leesville. This is our, this is July fourteenth, a special call work session at Town Hall complex. And at this time, if I could have a volunteer to do an education, that'd be awesome. Throw that out.
I'll do it.
Yeah, if you would, Ms. Pan, thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to live in a free country. We thank you for the opportunity to have the council meeting, to be able to attend the council meeting. And Lord, we thank you not only for our country, our state, our county, and for our, definitely for our beloved town. And dear Lord, I hope that each member of this council is touched in their heart to seek for the truth and what is best for this town as a whole, for each and every citizen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the glorious reign that you've given us. We ask you to forgive us of our sins and carry us through the evening. May this be a blessed, informative meeting. We thank you for all that you do for us and for loving us in Jesus' most holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Pan. A pleasure to lead this meeting, Senator. Let me introduce Mr. Robb.
Yes. First, please. Please, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir.
All right, new business ideas discussion related to community action report from community meetings related to recent gun violence. I'm going to turn the, turn it over to Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There are no, there were. Work session.
We're all marching to the church.
Are you smoking? We got the CT. They take OR.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to give council a little background on how we got here today. Of course, the tragedy, the tragedy that has eleven year old and nine year old prompted concern in our community about gun violence and how we can interrupt gun violence and change the tide in our, in our community. So, we had a series of meetings, private meetings as well as public meetings. Last week, we actually planted a tree for Sister J and for our family. And so now tonight, we come to talk to your report, back to council, the suggestions from the, from the community. And we've also synthesized that into a report for action. And I'll turn your attention to page one, which is pretty much an introductory of what I just said, basically, how we came to this point. And I think that we all can agree that gun violence and any type of violence in our community is something that, you know, we cannot stand for, we will not stand for, and that we need to take an aggressive stance against. And that's basically page one. So, getting right down to the suggestions. We are proposing today that council adopts standing committee to address several issues in the community. If you turn to page three, the list of committees and the purpose of the committees, the charter of the committees, the standing committees. So, one, one of the committees would be finance and capital, strategies committee, public safety committee, obviously. And then we have an economic development, job creation, and commerce industry committee. And of course, the financial committee, financial and capital strategies committee, something that we need in town anyway, so that we have a good oversight of our finances and the direction that we want to go as a, as a community. The public safety committee gives the citizens who came out to our meetings and other citizens and all citizens in our community an opportunity to engage with the Batesburg Leesville Police Department, even the Sheriff's Department, or issues of concern to them. That committee could have been very instrumental and maybe heading off some of this balance that we experienced. If there's a good dialogue between police and the community and citizens, we may be able to get ahead of balance in the, in the future. So, that's a very important committee. Now, the economic development, job creation, commerce, and industry committee is probably one of the most important of the, of the standing committees because this is addressed, this is directly from the community of things that they want to see happening in the town. They want to see jobs, more jobs. They want to have Mittens Tech open so that we have more educational opportunities for families, children, and families, particularly people, and I spoke to Ron Rains at Mittens Tech, and he's very interested in having students come back. Students who have graduated and are out of school, adults, he wants those kids to come back to, to Mittens Tech and to earn their associate's degree, at least their associate's degree. And we've also reached out to Voorhees College, about a four-year plan, a four-year degree. So, in essence, the students will come back to Mittens Technical College, receive their associate's degree, and at the same campus go on to Voorhees where they will earn their bachelor's of arts and design. So, that's very important. Now, how do you pay for it? How, how are you going to pay for committees and economic development and job recruiting into our community? We missed talking about this for a long time, about how you create jobs, whose job is it to create jobs in our community? So, what we proposing tonight is to use a portion of the ARA funds that are available to the town. I think that we are receiving two million dollars, is that right, Dave?
About two point seven.
Two point seven million. So, this proposal calls for us to set aside three hundred thousand dollars of the two point seven million dollars to contract with an entity who will be responsible for job creation in the town. So, that includes the industrial park as well as other areas in the town, any way that we can get jobs here in our community. And I think that's just a small fraction of the, of the two point seven. I think it's pretty reasonable to, to add. At this point, do we have any questions about the, the proposal or any input from council members?
That two point seven million you were talking about, has it already been determined what that money can be used for?
There is, there is some guidance. I think the, the governor was, we were on a call with the governor yesterday, and I think they rolled out a match for infrastructure. They would match any funds that we use from the ARA for infrastructure. I think it might be dollar, dollar per dollar. So, that's one thing. But the president outlined, and the White House outlined, and it's a new avenue for gun violence interruption and any type of, of programs and policies that would stop gun violence and, and kind of address the balance in the community. So, this would fall under that. So, isn't this a permissible use of the funds?
Are you saying all of these committees fall under that? What you saying?
Well, we, all these committees don't need to be funded. The, the economic development piece needs to be funded because the vision is that we would hire a firm who would do professional services, who could work. This will be their job, is to meet with the community, to recruit an industry suitable for our community, whether it be at the industrial park or somewhere else in town. But the goal is to create about two hundred to three hundred solid paid, living wage jobs, somewhere, anywhere from, you know, fifteen to twenty, twenty-two dollars an hour. So, I think, I think it's a good investment for, for our town if we can create, you know, a hundred, two hundred dollars. And like I said, that's a small fraction of the, of the two point seven million that is allocated to the community, with to the town, from the government.
Steve, there used to be an organization in the municipal association, I think it was called Front Street or?
Front Street.
Yeah, program, and I don't know if it's still available, but I think it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any way we can party, partnership with them to get their expertise involved in this? Because they work twenty, twenty, thirty hours a week.
I, I think that's a good idea. I think that anyone, any professional service entity that we contract with would have to work with municipal association and also with the county's economic and community development team. But they will be working on it, you know. This will be their job, a hundred percent focused on that.
Was there any discussion from the meetings that you had, you talked about education on gang violence in the community for, you know, small groups, parents, children, any type of intervention that, that came to them in those meetings you had?
That's a good question. And I think that society's murder has crystallized the need for community members to really kind of self-police and to also take responsibility. And so, a lot of those small group discussions was about, you know, hey, we need to get ourselves together, you know. We need to, we need to be on track, we need to take, take care of our kids, we need to protect our community. And that conversation kind of rolled into, well, how, how are we going to do that? Give me, give me some solid ideas and solutions, you know. That's a, that's a generalities. And that's when we started talking about, well, we need a job, we need, we need jobs around here. You know, once you got past the, we need Bo and Al, we need Luke, the other things that we really can't do as a council. And you get down to the things that we can do, and the number one thing is, is jobs and education. And, you know, people would talk about how they have incongruent educational careers, you know, where they may have taken a class in Mittens Tech, but for some other, for some life reason, they stopped. Then they started working, and then they, and, and so, these folks want to get back into the workforce. They understand that they have to be trained, that we need a, a well-educated, well-trained workforce in order to recruit companies here. So, I reached out to Ron Rains, the president of Mittens Technical College, and Ronnie Hopkins is a really good, good friend. He's the new president at Voorhees. And also being in college, at some point, we will meet with these folks and see how we can have them work together at the Mittens Technical Campus in Batesburg, to see how we can offer classes that, one, industries want, and two, that the community here wants to need.
Did anybody have any questions about the structure of the community, or idea of it?
So, essentially, you're speaking of the fact that the council would elect said members to preach or whatever to participate in committees and act to hear things that normally come before council and public hearings and so forth. And I actually mean councils trusted on those issues.
That, that is correct. I think that the, the community job is to take the pulse of the community, both business and citizenship, and to meet with them to kind of get an idea of where they want to go, where we need to go. And then we'd serve as advisory body to the council so that any action, the community wouldn't be able to take action without to make recommendations to council before action was finalized. But I think it's, it's a good idea to kind of get on the ground for understanding what the community need, how do we create jobs, how do we dance our educational opportunities. Those are the most important things, I think, that you know. And also, the public safety, you know, how do, how do we get Dave Waltmeyer expertise as a help out to mentor some kids? You know, that brought here, how, how do we get, how do we get community to focus? So, the first time day, you know, Rashawn in there is with, with Dave Waltmeyer, it's not, put his hand behind his back. And also, Dave knows who this kid is, and so maybe he won't put his hand behind his back. Maybe you can talk to him, maybe it's something that we can de-escalate and, you know, and avoid a bad interaction between the community and the public. So, and, and these communities really kind of are where the rubber meets the road in our community. It's just kind of an extension of council, council law.
You know, I personally see a need for, since council was elected to set policy, but they were also elected to make sure those policies are being followed. We establish ordinances and we need to follow up to make sure that those ordinances are being followed. I think I've given you some examples here, ordinances on the books, that the, we're not complying with. I think the community should bring those issue forward.
Now, let's talk about, let's talk about money. Are there any concerns, council material, with using part of the two point seven million to invest in, in a situation where we, where we need jobs? Where we have a certain professional service, we, you know, people did a contract with a company, Ford division, who has expertise and track record in recruiting and creating jobs. Do we, what, what do we feel about that?
I mean, if indeed ARV money can be used to, to create a staff position to bring in economic development, then yeah, I think that's something we've actually talked about in the past, and that, that would be a great thing. So, finding another position that would focus on economic development, I think that'd be great.
Yes.
It's a big if, if that money can actually be used for that.
Yeah, I don't think you want to create a staff position.
Well, I don't know that you would want to create a position that answers directly to council like that, and, you know, it has to, you know, we, our form of government, it needs to, to answer to the town manager.
Not if, not if, not if we employ the services of the outside entity that is a professional services. Council has that prerogative, I believe, when we serve the agency, or we can ask the AG to rule on that.
It would be, I mean, it would be like the town manager, it would be like the town attorney, like the magistrate. But I, I, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be the necessary structure that I would, I would be in favor of.
If, well, now, nobody said anything about that structure.
Well, I mean, the, the structure we just mentioned right here, so I'm telling you, I would be in favor of that structure.
Right, well, you mentioned that because we would.
It would be, I don't, you asked questions, Pan, so I'm giving you my opinion, and I'm not dictating anything. So, I think as a staff position, that answer the town manager, economic development person, I guess, I guess, yeah. We've talked about it before, this is something that'd be great if we can use the American Rescue Plan to fund that. I don't know from what I've read and listened to that that is in the cards with that, with that money. But hopefully it will.
Okay, so, what, what we're not going to do is allow you to rephrase or restructure what we proposed in it. This, that's not what we, that's not what I said.
Okay.
And that was not the, the sentiment or the intent. So, you know, you're going onto a whole different structure. We're talking about professional services, and a professional service, uh, position or entity would operate like any other professional service entity. But, you know, since you did, you did mention that, it, you can, council can have a special service contractor that reports to council, but we don't have a problem with them reporting to, to, to the manager. I mean, I mean, if you have a professional service, just let me do with engineering, you need the help. You know, they report to the manager, the manager makes sure they're, they're on, they're on task.
Right, okay, so, 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 so you hire a consultant or, or you make them on staff, I mean, I'm.
Well, I, I'm not really interested in the staff person. I'm not really interested in the staff person. I'm interested in, in, yeah, these are from, from the small groups that we had. We want to have somebody, we want to have the entity that has a track record of creating jobs. We don't want, we don't want to hire someone and say, okay, this is what you do, this is your job description. Now go out there and, and do it, and all, you know. Try. We want to have, we want to have professional services, um, proven entity that does it, right? And they would report, just like any other professional services, to town staff and to council. And I guess the double D of the details, once we get, once we get down the road to establishing a committee, and then we can, you know, pretty much, you know, say.
Have you talked to anybody at the municipal association?
I haven't talked to anybody at the municipal association about this. Well, I think that I, I did talk to you, Jeff, about that. He raised the same concern that, that Mayor did, which is as far as, you don't want to have, you don't necessarily want to have a consultant that's reporting directly to council. It's not, and like I said, it's not that you can't do it, but you want to have the consultant report to staff and then have a real, the, the staff, and have a real close relationship and communication with the head. And community will, will direct, direct us where, where we want to go, and report back to, to the community and to staff.
The ones you're talking about are individual, that would be, for lack of another word, a downtown revitalization person or a community revitalization person that would be responsible for A, B, C, D. To come in and work fixed number of hours a week to provide town with information on how to contact these individuals and get them to come into town and look, see what we got, and to come up with projects.
Well, what I, what I, what I see is that we have an entity and that does that, that, that actually goes out and recruits industry. We, we look for a, a big time entity, somebody's got a proven track record, working with Department of Commerce, working with the US Department of Commerce, that knows what they're doing, they know how to get, they probably already know who's looking as we speak. They, they know things that we don't know. Now, our job is to, and that's part of what the community, and the community's job is, to feed them the information about downtown Batesburg, about things that fit, what we need, what we need to do. Also, we want them to meet with Ron Rains and, and Ronnie Hopkins and, and anybody else as far as education piece, because that's going to be very key, is don't have, if you don't have the ability to train the workforce to do what the company needs them to do, so the cybersecurity. Voorhees has, Voorhees has a certificate program that does that. I mean, Mittens Tech has the, has the ability to train people to do a lot of different things. So, you want all those people at the table, but you want to do this on a higher, on a higher level. So, you're not having someone who's coming here, you know, a few hours a week, you know, they're kind of looking for, you know, opportunities, they're applying to RFPs. You want somebody that's like a, a professional lobby kind of firm, who knows how to do.
Somebody that puts feet on the ground and will give them.
That's right, that's right. And have a, a proven track record of doing, so that we feed them information about what we need to do, and they're going out there and doing this because time is, we need to create jobs here so that folks are not, I mean, why would you be at a cookout on Wednesday afternoon? You got to go to work tomorrow, you don't have, you don't have time for that.
That's a good idea, Steve, I like it. But how are you going to recruit people if they haven't been trained to do this? Now, you got to train these people before you can say, yeah, okay, you can do X, Y, Z, we'll go out and recruit this business. You can't go out and recruit the business expecting people to be trained for it. Because those business paper are wanting to hit the ground running if they go investment.
Right, and that's why, that's why Ron Rains and Ronnie Hopkins are very poised to work with this community because they know that, they know what they're capable of, what they can plug our folks into. Like I said, the cybersecurity certificate, certificate degree. If we go, if we're going after cyber, a cyber tech company here, right, then we already know that Voorhees can train the kids to do that. And so, you will have, and also we need to have Lexington Career Study, so that we have to identify things that need, as far as corporate need, and what we are capable of. But Ron and Ronnie Hopkins and Lexington, they know that information, they know what they can train people to do. And so, that, that's why I'm saying it's not, it can't be just any type of local person that wants to, you know, wants to get a job and come in and work Town Hall. It's got to be, this has got to be done on a high level. And the local piece of it is the standing committee that, that follows up and meets to make sure that all these people are meeting, and we meet with the community so we know what these kids, well, I call them kids, but you're talking younger adults, people, we know what people are interested in, we know what the corporations need, and we know what the colleges can provide. And when you bring all that together, I think that in, in about less than a year, I think we can probably get some good kids.
Would the budget provide for the educational funds for these attractive employees to go to college to earn a certificate in X, Y, Z, or who would pay for that?
Well, and that's another good reason to work with Ron and Voorhees, because they have those answers. I mean, and, and if we need to, if we need to, to, to figure that out, we can figure that out. But the, the most important thing is, just, I mean, if we operate like any other company, right? If you want to go to school, you want to get a certificate, you do a pass, you do a pass, you know, you get a bail grant, you, you know. So, it's not, it's not a, a freebie kind of giveaway. We can provide some policies due to the natural process of.
We have this facility already here in town through, to the technical people, but their enrollment has not been, what has been expected from the people, citizens, all Batesburg Lees.
Students that are, and part of that is in, part of that is because students that are in high school can receive their credentials and they can get their associate's degree from Mittens Tech. My, my daughter's on track to get that. So, that took, that took a lot of students out of the, out of the physical building. So, that, that's a piece.
How many kids are you talking about? How many kids actually did that?
It would be the same number of kids that actually went over there because it's absolutely free. So, it's whichever kids, you want.
Say, how many kids did it this year?
I, I don't know.
I think it's three.
I, I don't know.
I think it was three.
Look wrong. Come back and look at, we had over sixty students.
What's this, what?
Over sixty students that were honor roll students. You know, those students, between thirty percent of those, they received.
We're talking about.
Tricant, tricant. Mittens Tech in certain areas, they received that, they already had that. They have the same thing as an AA degree.
Right.
And so when they go off to a four-year college, they will be a,
They'll be sophomore.
Junior.
Rising, rising, sophomore, they'll be rising junior, right?
Yeah, and that program has, has been in place for three years now.
Right.
And it's working.
Yeah, well,
One thing the student's got to do is provide the interest and get in there to study.
And that comes from families, community support and things like that.
Well, I mean, I don't think, I don't think,
Which is where, you know, which is where we have issues. When you talk about gun violence and gangs, you know, that's, that's the seed of the issue is community support, family support. So, you know, the kids that are, the kids that are getting, you know, the kids that are coming away with their associate's degree are the same ones who would be, whether it's at the school or at Midland Tech building. Probably the same set of kids. And the reason why they're doing it is because they're prompted from someone, some influence in their life that prompts them to do that.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think that we, we are disagreeing here.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing.
I don't think we disagree. I think that that program is a, is a wonderful program. And I think what Ron has, has said to me is, okay, we have that program going, but we also want to reach out to the kids that, uh, I keep on the kids, but the young people who have graduated. But now on the gun company, get into the workforce and come back to school. So those are, those are, those are two different types of, uh, of individual kids. And like I said, we, we need to have Lexon three at the table anyway. And so we have Lexon three at the table and if we can gear, um, what the companies want to what Lexon three can offer through Midland Tech, then I think we got something good.
I think you'll find in most companies that we're going to be going after are looking for specific skillsets, not for general administration or an associate degree, uh, per se, where they have not established a major. Up front, uh, is looking for people who have chemical degree, uh, chemical engineering degrees. I don't think that personally, and I've been in business and industry, uh, don't think that, uh, a chemical company that we're going to be looking to develop people at Midland Tech with chemical engineering degrees. But they will be developing basic skillsets that will put them into at least the entry level. I mean, these kids are walking out of high school today and when they walk into the plant, it's not like when I was in industry where we trained some twelve hundred people using what used to be, before Midland Tech was called the state comprehensive technical education. Did a lot of ODT or on the job training. But companies today are looking for people with basic skillsets to forklift operators, welders, uh, extrusion, extrusion operators, uh, and a basic knowledge of things that go on in, in a industrial environment. I don't think the school provides that, uh, they may. I mean, I understand they have a firefighting course and we have a construction training course, uh, per se. But if you're talking about trying to attract a, uh, industry that requires, uh, specific skillsets, all right? Then, you know, we have some work to do.
But the student, well, I agree with you, but the students have to be willing to put forth the effort. I, I don't,
And I think that's what the community has said to me through these groups is that we're ready.
Okay, how will we get those students there?
Well, that's, that's what, that's why we need the committee. That's why we need to stay in the committee so that we can work on strategies. This committee will be working between council meetings and working with the consultants so that we can get out there and, and put boots on the ground, touch people. And you saw how many people were, were, were here, you know? We need to, we need to get those people where they are because training them is going to be what we, what we need to do to, uh, to make the town survive and grow. We've got to have that work, we have to have that base, that foundation is what we need to be putting in place so that the town can grow. And, uh, I think that's, this is the first step for that. If anybody else has any, any questions about the details of how we put this, how we put this together, you know? And I really appreciate everybody's input because, um, we have to create jobs, y'all. I think that everybody, everybody here that, that has run or campaigned, has campaigned on creating jobs, beautifying the town, um, you know, all, all things that, that we do when we campaign. And I think that this is just a small investment, you know, three hundred thousand dollars, a small portion of the two point seven million. And I think that we ought to give it a shot to see what we can come up with, at least create the, the committee so that we start to do, uh, the lesson foundation work and we start the, the, uh, the conversation, the dialogue about how we actually start this and get things going. Anybody else have any, um, any, uh, questions or input on, you know, because I know we, we make one up and then a meeting after a meeting. But we want to make sure that we have a, have an opportunity for people to, uh, to kind of question this out a little bit and not, you know, we shouldn't not do it just not to do it. You know, this is an opportunity, you know, we, we need to have our town grow, we need to listen to our, our citizens and, uh, and put something, put, put something,
Mr. Mayor, I'd be willing to, 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 to ask, for the council, to ask the municipal association for their in-house person that does this for a living. I can name you council's number of towns that have gone after this program and have been successful. And there's still two, three of us doing it. But these people have, have worked with the towns. They know what is needed, they know how to do it, they know how to formalize a budget, they know what you're looking for. And that's it, and they have to have the best interest of the town at heart. But municipal association has it.
Right, and they, 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 they had,
Bring them in, do a workshop.
But listen, they, they have, they've had it for many, many years, right?
Twenty-five years.
Right, and we, and we are still in the same place that we are. We need to do something, we don't need to, I'm not saying that we don't work with them, but we do it all, uh, we, we do all the above. Working with the Midland, with, with, uh, with municipal association does not preclude us from, from doing, having our own, um, uh, standing committee and our own people working also.
And we do standing committees, but we've got to have one central unit.
Right.
Or one central person that is responsible for getting this program off of the floor and getting it to run. And you need somebody, like you said earlier, that's experienced.
Right.
That knows what they're doing, knows how to go after, but they know that they're working for us.
Right, and that's why I said, that's why, that's what the three hundred K for is so that we can, uh, hire some, hire an entity to do that, to work with the municipal association, to work with the Department of Commerce, to work with the US Department of Commerce.
Well,
And with the Congress.
But let's not put too much emphasis at this time on three hundred thousand dollars. Cause we are, we are months and months away from,
Need a budget first.
Well, I just wanted to say, we'll put that number out here.
We're going to get the funds. But, uh, I, I, I think it's a very good first step that we ask MASC to do a workshop. And maybe they have suggestions as to the type of, uh, individual or, uh, entity, uh, if it's a professional group that the council should consider at, at that time. So, uh, you know, let's take the first step. Talking about money at this point in time may be a little bit premature, but, um,
My thing, well, I just didn't live, I don't,
But the concept is that our community needs to grow and we need, as council, we need to get together and operate in a manner that will promote our community and promote growth. Uh, both on residential as well as a industrial.
Oh, okay.
Yes, uh, we have to have the holy trinity. We have to have commercial development, industrial development and residential. Our tax base is, if you compare our tax base to most other communities in, in Lexington County, it's, has not grown at the same rate that they have. And so therefore we need some answers. Is it, uh, people more residential or is it, uh, you know, industrial? But as a council, that's what we're elected to do, is the welfare of the community, to move the community forward. And if we act as a group and work as a group, I think that, uh, you know, standing committees are an integral part of it. But, uh, you know, we can move forward from here. And I think some of the recommendations here are, have, uh, some merit and should be seriously considered.
So I'm trying to get, you, you got to support the idea of staying with the communities for, for, hm? You support it?
Push there.
Yeah, no, you support, uh, no.
I mean, the, the, the concept is wonderful.
Right.
And it's been proven to work in different areas throughout the, the state, throughout the country.
Okay, they got, they have standing committees in,
Well, they got the money, they got the money to spend on it.
Well, we're going to get it too.
Well, I hope we can.
That's right.
I hope we can, I hope we can.
Chicken or the egg, do we get the money first or do we get the progress?
What, what do you, what do you think about, do you support, um, having a, a standing committee to, uh, in, in those areas? So system, what, what do you think about this?
I think what you're doing is, is good, I really do. Um, just want to make sure that we do it in the right way and go about it in a legal way to make sure we do it illegally and everything, you know? I was going to ask you about the, these committees, are they already formed or are you?
Let's see what we're proposing. At one, at, at one time, council had committees, this council, and we get away with the committee. And, uh, we had committees, I think,
Are you familiar with that, Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes, I am.
Yes, yes.
So you're proposing that most committees,
They over exercised, it was a good idea, but it was overused.
It's called restrained, yeah.
You have to, you, it, I was, I was at some of those meetings that ran until, till o'clock at night.
Yep.
Because the committees kind of overreached a little bit and almost got into micromanaging.
You're correct.
And so you have to, when you, when you shut up the committees, you just got to make sure that everybody is streamlined and it's always, it's,
It is like,
And it's not, um, it's not, um, micromanaging. But the good thing about the, this economic, the built-in, uh, type of committee is that we're clearly not doing that at the staff level. So it's not really too micromanaging at, at that point. And I think that the police department would welcome community input, um, as far as public safety. Because it just makes their job easy, uh, for public safety. So, and then, you know, the communities that, that deal with finances and whatnot, it makes our job as council a little bit easier. Um, because we actually know, uh, we cannot get a five-minute report about what we did, uh, where, where we are for, for the month. All our finances is summarized in a, in a five-minute, uh, manager's report. And there's no way that you can really understand where we are and where we need to be in five minutes. And that's something that the community could do.
I disagree with you just a little bit because it's up to each individual council person and mayor.
We get into a weekly report and,
You get a weekly report and that's just a snapshot of where you're at.
Right.
If you, when you look over it, if you see something you don't understand, that's when you come to see the town manager and say, hey, explain this. Or is this a, hey, hey, fly out? That's the way you do the budget.
Right, I would like to, I would like to do that.
Share that information with the remainder of council.
Right, yeah. That's, that's what it is, that we're only one of nine.
And I think it's important that, that, you know, we, we, this work session was a report about the gun violence that occurred in our town. So I, I, I feel like we're, we've kind of shifted way off.
Well, you, you always feel like we shifted, you know, we, that we get into, uh, in everything we don't want to go.
No, 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 it's not that I don't want to go there, it's just that you disenfranchise people when you don't, when, when you don't tell them what they've come, when you don't talk about the things that they've come to listen to. When they've had gunshots at their doorstep and they're here and they're, and they're having,
I think it's a,
I mean, We've kind of,
I think it's a, um, gun violence interruption and creation of good jobs in, in our community. So I don't know where we had gone off of the, where, where have we gone off of the, uh, of the agenda?
I'm, I'm not saying we have, I just think we're, we're, we're now reaching back to the problem that we had.
If you've got young people who have jobs and have money, they are less likely to pick up a gun and walk out. So I, I do think that the issues that we have addressed may have strayed slightly from a mainstream, but they are part of the issues of why we have gun violence. We have people who don't have four-line jobs, who don't have a light at the end of the tunnel to walk towards, all right? You can't teach a person to climb a mountain unless you provide them a mountain to climb and tell them what they're going to get when they get to the top of the mountain.
I started out,
We as a council have an obligation to assist our community in that form.
I started out working in textiles and one of my first general managers, you know, in a meeting one day, he said, I want y'all to understand, you can't make first, I'll sentence. Don't matter how hard you try, you can't make first, I'll sentence. It's got to have the quality. When you can identify what that quality is that we want. And that starts over at the high school, middle school, elementary, primary, that's where school starts. You've got to teach them if they want to work. Right around town, tell me how many signs you see right now, help wanted.
Yeah, but you've got to understand why.
Why?
Why, why, at least, uh, uh, it, it's not that people are not wanting to work and it's not that it's people, uh, are on unemployment. I'm just kidding, they're not on unemployment, they've been taking other jobs. They've taken jobs as a craft, at Lewis Rich, um, paint big farms.
Yeah, okay.
Stereolite, they, they've taken jobs that actually, you know, are paying a little bit more and have benefits.
Correct.
So,
Hell, ever. You still have jobs going on the field.
However, councilman,
Yes.
Uh, fifteen to sixteen months, fifteen to eighteen months ago, how many help wanted signs did you see?
I've seen today.
You, you saw very few of them. So we're, we're, at the moment, we have to also weigh the fact that we have a special set of circumstances here.
We're going through a transitional period right now.
We are in a transitional period. Let's come back three months from now after some of these, uh, some of this free, uh, previews are gone. And let's see how many of those signs disappear. Okay, and, you know, I, we can't control minimum wage. And if an employer wants, feels that he can only offer seven dollars and fifty cents an hour, that's what he's going to offer. If the, if the employer down the street offers, uh, twelve dollars an hour, he's going to,
He's going to crack and crack. That goes back to what Stacey is doing here, trying to get these people, can't think of, educated, okay? Educated into how important it is to have, number one, a high school diploma, some type of college certificate or diploma or whatever, some type of,
Right.
Even if you're going to be a welder, a plumber, electrician, you know how hard it is to get a plumber and electrician these days?
Hello, can I get a witness?
I mean, they, they,
There are no paying jobs, doesn't, doesn't really pay jobs.
There are a lot of plumbers around, but if you want to get a licensed plumber, it is difficult. And if you'd like to understand why, look at the South Carolina requirements to be a licensed plumber.
There's a reason for that.
Indedied servitude is a part of that program, which is called apprenticeship, all right? That is part of the program, but there are multiple, there are always, we're not going to be able to isolate and find a corrective action for each and every individual cause. But we can attract the core problems and attack the core problems and work on those. I can't change how a mother raises her child, all right? Uh, but the educational system can help mold and we can mentor, uh, children and we can have our own input, uh, so forth. It is a change in attitude, but education is a big part of it and the skillsets. But at first, we have to identify what resources we have that we can offer these companies. Because just having a hundred people who know how to weld isn't going to attract a welding company unless we have the other support infrastructure and things to do so. So it's, it's a,
Well, it's been, also goes with all of it.
It is a component of, of, I think that trying to go out there and see what we may be able to attract, starting with MASC's, uh,
That'd be my suggestion. And we'll be there, and we'll see them next week.
MASC's, the trip of a thousand miles starts with one step. That's where we need to be.
Listen, actually, when I listen to you guys dialogue a little bit, it just kind of crystallizes what, what this is all about. This is all about first create, uh, uh, some committees so that we can have a base to work with and, um, and, um, uh, the municipal association can work with, the committee can work with the, with the municipal association and report back to council as to what direction we think. So that we don't have a, uh, a, a complete council, um, that everybody's trying to, to, to kind of understand what was going on. So the committee would work with, uh, with the municipal association and other entities to report back to council. But I think that would, would, um, in response to the community's input, I would like for us to, uh, to place this on the agenda for, uh, August where we can go up and down on whether we're gonna establish these committees. It don't have to be the money part of it, but at least establish the committees so that we can, um, at least start, so that every journey starts with a first step. And I think that voting on establishing the committees is a, is a good first step because other than that, we are doing the same thing and hoping for a different outcome. You know, if somebody told me that was the definition of consent. So we don't want to keep chasing our tail. We know we need to create jobs and we, from this dialogue today, we know a good idea of how we create jobs and what we need to do. So the next logical step is for us to go ahead and vote to do these committees and then see where we go there with the committees, bring back the council and then council can vote on, um, how we go forward.
Uh, who's gonna contact the municipal association?
I'll call Jeff. And like I said, we're gonna do that, are you going now, gentlemen? And, but we're not going now, we're...
No, I, I...
Okay, well, uh, send me, give me that. Okay, John, but he's on, okay. So we, the three of us will corner Jeff and, uh, and take his brain or, you know, I'll give him a call in the morning and, uh, we'll dialogue a little bit, do email and I'll report back to, to you all.
That'd be fun.
Um, but like I said, he thought it was a good idea when I first spoke with him about it.
Oh, it was an excellent idea.
The, the question became the details, the devil's in the detail of how you do a professional service contract and who they report to. And like I said, I don't have a problem in reporting staff as long as we, uh, are able to get them on the right direction. Right, so, right, okay. Did anybody have any other, uh, information, any, or question, anybody from the community have any input on what you said today?
Sounds like y'all are talking about parenting skills.
All that, it takes a village, right?
Yeah, it also takes housing, you know, I talked about that from two thousand and seven. It's nothing you said tonight that I hadn't stood up in front of the council meeting and said over a fifteen-year period, is it? Not one word.
You know what's good about that?
I definitely want, I definitely want to hear you, but I think as a body, we should adjourn and then...
Hold on a second, man, I want to, she, she said something. No, no, I want to hear it, I think...
We can, we can go.
But listen, I, I wouldn't want to say that, I want, I just want to say that you've been talking for fifteen years to us and we've been listening, I've been listening, and that's why we're getting it back to you.
Because if that were true during, during Reagan's administration, we wouldn't have voted to keep citizens putting their name on the ballot.
I do have a...
That's disgusting. That's why we can't grow because smart people won't come where they aren't heard.
Yes, we have a motion.
A second to District One?
Yes.
District, uh...
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
Now, yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you everyone, there's food, if you want to have food.